All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, November 20th, 2019. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We'll begin with board reports. Nina, you're up.
All right, so I attended the State of the Schools luncheon on November 13th, and it was held at the Tech Center. It was very well organized, and the Culinary Arts Program at the Tech Center catered a really good lunch. But something that really stood out to me was the video that Gianna, Josh, and Sophie, they also make the Be the Best You videos on YouTube. So they made a video on explaining the budget and how the budget works. And now it's on YouTube, the entire State of Schools luncheon. And so they did a really good job of explaining like what exactly it is. And so for parents and students to watch that, it does a really good job of explaining it. And then, so we have the Full Leadership Conference coming up this Saturday that MASC is hosting in conjunction with Perry Hall High School, that's up in Baltimore. And SMASK, which is the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, is taking 45 students in their delegation, which is the highest it's ever been. So that's amazing. And the day is going to be full of workshops for both middle school and high school students. And I will be presenting a workshop on individuality, so.
So last week, I, along with Dr. Smith and Mr. Egan from the Tech Center, along with several people from the Farm Bureau, went to North Hartford, Hartford's High School to see their natural resource and agriculture program. So we did this, you know, we went up as a group to see how they do their state-of-the-art program. You know, they have natural resource and agriculture together, and how we can improve ours. It was a great day, a little bit of a long ride. I think we left at five o'clock in the morning. But it was, and it was cold up there. But, very cold. But it was, it was great to see how they do their program. I'm on the advisory committee for the case program here at our Tech Center, which is the agriculture program. And so along with the other, some, several of the other people that are also on the advisory committee for that program went. They had, the FFA was there, they did, they showed us how they do their meetings, they had, you know, they took us around to the different classrooms. We got to talk to the teachers and the students, see what type of equipment they had, and went and, it was great. It was their greenhouse, it was, it was amazing. It was amazing.
Saw the llama?
Yes, saw llama, the donkey, the horse, they have therapy horses. Also the pigs.
Very much.
Yes. Yeah, so it was, it was very interesting and brought back a lot of information on how we can better our program for our students, so. And I thank Mr. Egan for driving, you know, it was like, it was a long ride.
He definitely had a van full.
Yes, he did, so it was, it was fun. So I'm glad that we went and were able to, you know, get something productive out of it, so.
Let's see, it's been a busy two weeks. A variety of things, I think the two highlights was Dr. Smith's presentation along with our panel of teachers and principals of the year at the State of the Schools before the St. Mary's County Chamber of Commerce. I think there is a lot of information that was provided that perhaps those business leaders were unaware of, and especially of the things that we are doing within our schools. Yesterday, we had the county commissioner meeting for some budget amendments, successful in some areas, others not so. Let's see, and then today, I am now serving on the May Board of Directors. So we had a four-hour meeting this morning, just updating on the State Board of Education, Kerwin, which was the biggest one, apparently from what we understand, and Dr. Thornton, who is on the committee, sits on the board also. It appears that the recommendations will be finalized sometime this month. And then, you know, they have their amounts of money attached, but then it will be up to the legislature just to decide what they assign in funding, if anything, and in what stages Kerwin will be passed. So stay tuned.
This is a very busy county and a very busy Board of Education. So it's very difficult to narrow it down to one thing that you want to talk about during the board meeting. But I attended band concerts, orchestra concerts, and chorus concerts for elementary, middle, and high school. The music was positive, uplifting, hopeful, inspiring, and encouraging. All of the performances were stellar performances, and three of the songs I really liked. And I will read some of the lyrics in part. One of them is called "Inscription of Hope." The lyrics in part state, "I believe in the sun even when it's not shining, and I believe in love even when there's no one there, and I believe in God even when he is silent. I believe through any trial, there is always a way." Another one I liked was "Staying Together," and part of the lyrics state, "Joining hands slowly takes us to a place where all can believe in. Side by side, we could be growing hopes and dreams if we stand together." And the final one was "Wade in the Water." Alicia Lee, who is the MSDE Fine Arts Coordinator, was a guest conductor here. And she had the audience on our feet, she had us singing and dancing "Wade in the Water." So we said, "Wade in the water," I won't sing it, I'm not a very good singer, "Wade in the water." And then we did this "Wade in the water," and God's gun of trouble, the water. Everybody was having a wonderful time. And some of the guest conductors were very impressed with St. Mary's County Public Schools' Fine Arts Program, and they wanted to thank the Board of Education for keeping the programs strong while other counties are cutting back. Our programs are tremendous. And here's some of the quotes they said. One person said, a guest conductor said, "I was not disappointed, the students are amazing." Another one said, "The students were kind, respectful, hardworking, and critical thinkers." Another one said, "The real gem of the county is the strings." That's the orchestra. And also said, "Our students were very well prepared, it was icing on a well-polished cake." And children who are in arts do much in achievement. And music is the one thing that unites humanity." And they wanted to make sure that we thank all of the music directors, music educators. I want to thank the students for doing a tremendous job, the parents, the guest conductors, music educators, high school, elementary, and middle school. Mr. Burrows, who is the supervisor of Fine Arts. Mr. Matthew Pearson, Great Mills High School Band Director, who stepped in with a 48-hour notice to conduct the honors band when the guest conductor could not show up. And he did a fabulous job. Also, let's see, event managers, it was wonderful. I just had a great time. There's much talent in St. Mary's County School. As I always say, we're the best school system on planet Earth.
State, nation, Earth.
Yeah, whatever, we're the best, no matter what. And everybody works hard, the board members, superintendent, all the teachers, our community partners, we all work together because we are working with the future, our students. Thank you.
I attended the Veterans Day Parade in Lenartown. As I'm sure you are well aware, the Lenartown Veterans Day Parade is the largest one in the state of Maryland. This one seemed particularly long, there were lots and lots of floats. Every year, I take the opportunity to ride on the float with the Lenartown Elementary School students who've been designing and building floats for the parade for many, many, many years. And the speeches that were done by two students from Lenartown Elementary and three students from Captain Walter Francis Duke were especially moving this year. They, the students do a great job of what Veterans Day means to each of them, and I really enjoyed it. So hats off to everyone. And Mrs. Washington has been helping to emcee the event for a long time, which is great of her because Veterans Day is her birthday. So she spends her birthday with a lot of people at a lot of marching groups.
Thank you, Catherine.
All right, so all the things that we did together, a couple of things I did separately. New teacher seminar was last, last Wednesday where we had a chili cook-off, and I only mention it because we have the two winners of the chili cook-off here. It was a tie. One was Ms. Jen Consalvo, the Principal Esperanza Middle School, with her pirate chili, which was supposed to, it was fantastic. And then Dr. Walker, where'd Dr. Walker go? Oh, he's out there. Dr. Walker was a tie with his beanie, not, no, meaty, not-too-beanie chili. It was a very good time, it was a lot of fun. We're trying to do things to kind of bring all the teachers together, new teachers together, and have an opportunity for building a sense of community. And to all those who offered their time and their expertise to bring in pots of chili to serve, it was absolutely wonderful, and thank you very much, Jen, and Dr. Walker. I went up to the Capitol for the United States Secret Service protecting our school's presentation of their report that they have updated. It was really quite informative, went with Mr. Wyatt for that, that was interesting. Great resources that we brought down, I just met with Sheriff Cameron where we shared some of the materials that were shared with us. Great conversation that's going on. We had the Town Hall after the State of the Schools, we had National Honor Society induction at Chopticon High School, we were there for that, remember? Legislative Day up in Annapolis where I got to go up and hear from all of the architects behind the Kerwin Commission and their plans for the upcoming legislative session. Keep in mind that between now and the time legislative session starts in January, they're going to have to take all of that recommendation, all of that funding, all of that stuff, and write actual legislation. And for those of you who have read actual legislation, that is not a small task. So we'll see as they move from concept to plan to reality. And then the only other thing I'd like to really mention before we get to all of you incredible people here, is that, Dr., the state superintendent every single year makes a point of coming out to visit every single one of the school systems. So she gives a day each year to come out and visit. And so in the years past, she's been, she's visited our STEM programs and Captain Walter Francis Duke and the GIS program at Lenartown High School and the Forest Center. And today, she came out and went to Chopticon to see the AVPA program in particular, because that really is something that's, that's very special to us in St. Mary's County. She was just overwhelmed at the talent of the children, the depth of the program, the fantastic partnership that brings incredible artists in to work with our kids. We got to see in Sarah Lorick's chorus program, Faith Bush was there, and they were, they were practicing the songs that they build into their repertoire for their capstone, and they talked about that culminating performance and event and research that they do. And she was just overwhelmed by that, because she had heard that same conversation in GIS and in STEM and in the Tech Center program. So that was really fantastic. Then she went to Dinerd Elementary School where we talked about what a fantastic school that is, rich and full of traditions, and how specifically they're taking a look at one of their, one of their data points that has a little bit of a challenge for them, how they all come around and use data and partnerships and bring in people to address challenges within the school system, but also just how fantastic Dinerd Elementary School is itself. And it was very fitting that we started our day with Principal Kim Summers at Chopticon High School, and then we went back to Dinerd where, you know, she was such an incredible, wonderful, successful principal early on in her administrative career. And Ms. Summers shared that, that incredible privilege of being able to be a principal when they're this big, and be a principal when they're this big, and see them through that whole journey, and that's something very special. So, so many incredibly positive things going on in St. Mary's County public schools. And yes, we did have a commissioner meeting yesterday, but you know what, we're going to focus on all of the really positive and incredible things that our kids do every single day. So I'd love to move it on into the next phase.
Mr. Burrows, you're on.
Yay, Mr. Burrows, yay, Mr. Burrows. A great deal of praise for Mr. Burrows today, too, from, from Dr. Salmon for the, for the program that you, that you coordinate and work with. It's very evident your passion for what you do and the people who do that great work.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Mrs. Washington, I bet you have a beautiful singing voice.
It needs cultivating.
Maybe next year at the concert. Dr. Smith, would you please join me?
Yes, I would.
So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Board members, as always, thank you for your continued support of the arts in our schools. Tonight, we recognize our student artists selected to appear in the first quarter Superintendent's Art Gallery. Throughout the school year, schools are asked to submit outstanding pieces of art to be displayed here at Central Office. The artworks can be found right here in the boardroom and also leading down the hall to Dr. Smith's office. At the conclusion of each quarter, student artists are recognized for their participation in the gallery. Students, when your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and a photo opportunity with Dr. Smith. After everyone has been called, there will be opportunities for group photos. So tonight, we would like to recognize the following students. From Chopticon High School, Sarah Armstrong. We'll also like to thank Ms. Kim Summers back there behind the TV for being in attendance. All right, from George Washington Carver Elementary School, Kalen Crocker. And thank you, Ms. Ryan, for being here as well. Lelani Johnson. Lelani is currently a student at Esperanza Middle School, however, her work was created when she was a student at Everett Green Elementary School. Thank you. From Hollywood Elementary School, Harper Reno. Harper's work also earned first place in the Calvert-Cliffs Poster Contest Hollywood Pre-K to One category and the grand prize overall other pre-K to One category. From Town Creek Elementary School, uh, elementary school, excuse me, Brooklyn Sager's. And thank you, Ms. Brenfleck, for being in attendance. And I don't believe we saw Logan come in, but we, or, excuse me, Hogan, but we'd like to thank Logan Whipple for his work. He is currently a student at Chopticon High School, however, his work was created when he was a student at Margaret Brent Middle School.
Okay, artists. Thank you very much for creating those incredible works of art. Thank you very much for allowing us to house them here at Central Office so they could be in our, see, these are the, this is where they were hanging and down the hall. Your artwork makes us happy. It reminds us of all the really, really great things our kids do every single day. So at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, we'd like to maybe take a little break now, or do we want to go through?
We're going to do everybody.
We're going to do everybody?
Yes.
So parents, if I couldn't indulge you, if you can just wait, we're going to recognize an incredible group of athletes and leaders at Chopticon High School who really put themselves into something great. And then we'll break, and we'll all take pictures with you in front of your pictures that you've created, and we'll all get together, okay? Does anybody want to say anything? Okay, that's fine. Your art speaks for itself. So if I could ask you, go back and sit with your parents, and then when we come for a break, we'll take pictures with all the artwork, okay?
Now it is Mr. Watson's turn.
I'm just going to stay here.
You have a lot of work to do.
Good evening, Chairman Bailey, Vice Chairman Allen, members of the board, Dr. Smith, distinguished guests. I'm here this evening to recognize Chopticon High School as the national champions of Touchdowns Against Cancer. Touchdowns Against Cancer is a national program created in partnership between MaxPreps, Pledget, and St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. In support of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, this national high school football program unifies communities across the country for a common cause, finding cures and saving children. Chopticon Football has participated in the Touchdowns Against Cancer Campaign sponsored by MaxPreps and Pledget since its beginning in 2016. Every touchdown the team scored in the month of September went towards their bank of funds to donate to St. Jude's Children's Cancer Research Center. Chopticon Football raised $7,500 in 2019, earning them the 2019 national title. By bringing home top honors this year, Chopticon High School, specifically football program, became the first school in the nation to earn two team titles. Chopticon won its first national championship in 2017 by raising over $12,000. The team's gold game was the highlight of their fundraising and awareness campaign for this worthy cause. Students and patrons poured into the stadium wearing their gold shirts in support of this worthy cause. The team was presented with its national championship trophy on October 11th, 2019, at their home game in front of the student body and community. This was certainly a group effort. The football team, cheerleaders, student body, staff, and community all rallied together to support this cause. I would like to take this opportunity to thank a few individuals for their efforts. Head coach Anthony Lasanti, assistant coach Mike Gallo, cheerleading coaches Jen Grimes and Jesse Williams, the football moms, specifically Tara Gregory, Danielle Welch, Tony Inska, and Brenda Bouch. A special thank you to Principal Ms. Summers and the administration, the athletic boosters of Chopticon High School, and all those who supported this campaign. At this time, I would like to recognize Coach Lasanti, Coach Gallo, the coaching staff, student athletes, and the entire school community as the 2019 Touchdowns Against Cancer national champions. Congratulations.
Come on, come on, we're going to slide you right out here. Just kind of get you two right here and then line up everybody down the road. All right. So I have a certificate of recognition from the Board of Ed signed by Chairman Bailey and myself that is a recognition for your, recognition for your fundraising efforts in the fight against cancer. And so I'm just going to hand this recognition to Mr. Gallo. It's the smaller one there. Now, I have a much larger official citation from Senator Jack Bailey, but before I read it, I want you to know that I'm going to ask somebody to say a few words after I'm done. So, as a great team does, you can huddle up, figure out who that's going to be, but somebody in this group is going to say a couple of things about, about the efforts that you've done, how you've all pulled together as a team, how you not only perform well on the field, in the classroom, and in the larger community. Just a couple of things. All right, so while I'm reading this, I'd like to see some perspiration. The Maryland General Assembly official citation, "Be it hereby known to all that sincerest congratulations are offered to the Chopticon Braves football family in recognition of being named the Touchdown Against Cancer National Champion raising $7,500 for St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital. Your hard work and community's dedication is unmatched as we work toward defeating childhood cancer, and is presented on this day, the 20th day of November 2019, signed by Senator Jack Bailey." So with this, I'd like to hand this to Mr. Lasanti, Coach Lasanti. Very nice, congratulations. Round of applause. And now he's stepping, he's stepping away from the microphone. I knew one gal would be talking today.
That's a good one. I, I really wanted the whole program to come, but everybody that's involved would fill this room. So when I decided to jump in this campaign with our football program in 2016, I didn't think we'd win two national championships in the last three years. So as faculty, staff, players, students, everybody just got involved for a great cause. And to me, that's, that's pretty heartwarming to, especially when we have a couple of kids in our community that are battling cancer. It's something that we can do, just a small part to help combat that. So I'm pretty proud of this for everybody involved, especially our great team moms, Ms. Summers, my awesome coaching staff, our cheerleaders, our awesome football players, even though they get hurt. But yes, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So we'll take a break.
Okay.
Football people, don't move, we'll do your pictures first.
We'll do the football people first.
Yes, because they're already here, so Scott will arrange you.
So let's stage you out, let's coach, assistant coach in the middle, find everybody out on both sides, make it look really attractive.
All right, are we all ready?
Got to unpack more boxes. Yes, ma'am, go for it.
Okay, Karen Marine has her facial.
We can still get done.
Okay, all right, so we have two public hearings this evening. The first one is on policy JHA threat assessment. Do we have any public comment on that one?
No, we do not.
Okay. So anyone in the room would like to comment on JHA, Threat Assessment Policy? Okay, so the second one is on the educational equity policy, Policy ACA. Do we have any public con, or comment on that?
Yes, we do, on Dr. Janice Walthour from St. Mary's County NAACP 7025.
Okay, so, and I will just remind you, Dr. Walthour, that your comment is limited to three minutes, and you've signed up, you cannot yield it to someone else, and Kathy will be in charge of the clock.
Good evening, members of the board, just here just to show our appreciation for the opportunity to be involved with the Equity Task Force and to help support the public schools and the Board of Ed in bringing this policy to fruition. We've been doing a lot of work, and I think what is so, why we are so impressed is because of the community involvement that we are experiencing in not only developing the draft of, at the policy for you all, but also giving our input into partnerships and practices that will be put into the regulations. So we are just hopeful that our work will continue to be appreciated and will be sustained as we move forward with this, with this policy, because we know that equity is something that the NAACP has been promoting for many years with diversity in staffing, looking at programming and the pathways programs, looking at equity in all areas for all of our students and staff in St. Mary's County public schools. To that end, as a comment, I was just speaking with Dr. Montgomery because yesterday, as past president of the Unified Committee for Afro Contributions, Nat Squorgans, Mike Brown, and I met with Dr. Montgomery and Lisa Bachner to talk about having field trips to the African-American historical sites in St. Mary's County. So they were very supportive, we had a good time discussing In Relentless Pursuit, which is a book that the UCAC has written, the African-American Monument, the United States Memorial Color Troops, Interpretative Center, the Drayden Schoolhouse. So there are so many things available. And so we're hoping that as we continue the partnership with equity and diversity, that these things will all be put together in a curriculum, and so that all staff will have the opportunity to use it in their classrooms. So let's move forward and put the recommendations and accolades also to Dr. Mayer and Ms. Dillahun for the work they're doing in moving us forward with this policy. Thank you.
Kathy, do we have any other public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, anyone else? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed on the educational equity. Let's see, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
So our next item is the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Today's Consent Agenda has approval of the minutes of November 6, 2019. Personnel, teachers, the 2021-2020-2021 Board of Education meeting schedule, print shop, equipment lease, and maintenance contract, and Imagine Learning. I move approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We do not have any action items, but we do have one informational item, which is Dr. Marr and Dr. Montgomery on the new ESSA Strategic Plan.
Did I move us?
No, I think you're still good.
Well, we are glad to share with you the work that's been going on for the last several months, working across departments and divisions throughout the school system to bring together the Master Plan, or now as it's called, the ESSA Consolidated Strategic Plan for 2019-2020. And just a little background, as you know, for quite a while, we were under the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan process, which started in 2002. And then we did annual updates for about 12 years. In 2016, the process started to shift focusing on specifically our academic progress for Park. And then this year, we are under a new model for the ESSA Consolidated Strategic Plan, which looked at targeted focus areas related to the ESSA accountability areas. It's structured in two parts. We've got Part One, which is a little shorter, which is what we're really going to highlight. And then Part Two, which covers all of the Title Grants, Programs, Fine Arts Grant, and other reporting requirements for the process. So if we could just highlight a few of the key elements within the Master Plan process, there is an executive summary, which in a -- they actually gave us a page limit of five pages to address comprehensively what the school system is doing and how we approached not just the planning process and identifying focus areas, but how that ties into our work with equity and how we looked at data throughout the process throughout the year. So I'll talk just briefly about that in a few minutes. There's also a finance section, which aligns all of our expenditures to those goal areas. And then we look at three areas of focus. And these are three succinct targeted areas within all of the accountability areas of ESSA. The school system, as Dr. Montgomery will talk about in a few minutes, really looked at how all of our data elements and specifically identified three areas that are going to be focused for our work for the year. And then, as I talked about, Part Two of the big grant is the process, is the grant, or all of our grants. The work really began early in the summer and goes on throughout the summer. The first submission was due to the state on October 15th. Following that, panels from across the state come together, look at our Master Plan, provide clarifying questions. And then we had about 48 hours to respond to those clarifying questions. Fortunately, our responses were acceptable and our plan was approved. So we, last week, submitted our final version of the consolidated plan. In the first week of December, all of those plans from across the state will be presented to the State Board for their final approval. If you want to take a look at it, where it is, it is posted online or will be by tomorrow. We want to present it to you tonight first. The plan is posted on our school system webpage, both at the bottom in the About Us and the About Us tab. So in the ESSA Plan, as we've looked at before, there are two big areas of accountability: achievement as well as school quality indicators. And we've shown you this chart before, so I'm not going to go into all the details. But these are all the data elements within the accountability process that are compiled to bring about the school report cards. As a system, we look at those same data elements. And across all of these areas is where we work to identify specific focus areas. And how do we do that? Through a very extensive needs assessment process. So that begins with a systemic review of all of the accountability measures as they come in. Now, some elements are not there. We still don't have some elements of, for example, the survey. And so they come in at different times of the year. So this process really goes on, not just in one time of year, but as data comes in. There are what we call collaborative ed camps, where the Division of Instruction works with the schools and brings them in in small teams to look at their specific data. We have aligned our school improvement process with those same accountability measures. And the school improvement process then looks at all of those elements. And then each of those teams look through the Division of Instruction, and Dr. Montgomery can talk more about this, looking at persistent areas of attention. Are there areas that just keep coming up that really need continued work? And that really helps to frame the work. Additionally, the process of looking at the data through an equity lens. Are there particular student groups or particular groups across the system that need focused attention? There's a public review of data in all of the public board meetings. When we have that data come in, it is shared with you and with the public. And then Dr. Montgomery leads bi-weekly data meetings with her team to really take specific looks at that. So with that, through that entire process, we narrowed down to three targeted areas.
So the target areas that we focused on in our ESSA Plan were early literacy, transition grades, and then ninth grade success. And we chose each one of those areas because those were things that definitely data-supported, that we had issues with across the system. And it's really hard to, you know, to look at. We're used to having that we're looking at MCAP for everything. And we're looking at this big, wide range of choices of what we, you know, we don't really narrow our focus on anything. So I think we really appreciated the fact that we were asked to just take a really hard look at our data and focus in on some very specific targets. And what was really especially nice about that was having the schools do that as well. So each one of the schools then, usually what they've done is taken a look at their goals have always been the ESSA targets for every grade and every content on MCAP scores. And now they really did focus in on just a few things that they're going to do well. It's not that the other things aren't still important, but it's just focusing in on what the data was telling us would really help to lift everybody up. So our areas here would definitely do that. So when we're looking at our first one with early literacy, you've heard us speak about DIBELS for a very long time. And, you know, where we are, we give the DIBELS assessment for all students in grades K through 5. And we've seen, you know, the analysis, we've seen a great correlation in how well our students have done on DIBELS in the very early grades and then what their MCAP performance is. So targeting our students at our early literacy program and looking at what we're doing for kids at a very early age, we think is going to only have good impact for us over time. That we're just going to, we give the assessments. And we're also actually bringing it all the way down into Head Start and Pre-K. They're also doing an assessment called the IGDS. And they'll do the IGDS assessment and identify things, weaknesses in children and their reading. And then we'll put interventions in place for them very, very early. And then starting in kindergarten, looking at the DIBELS data and aligning interventions with those data points so that we can make sure that we have students reading on grade level. The goal will be by the time they get to the end of grade two. So if we can make all of those things happen with some very targeted interventions, that will definitely help to close learning gaps and to help to develop foundational literacy skills. So transition grades. And so definitely, we've seen an issue with transition eighth to ninth grade. We've seen an issue with transition fifth to sixth grade. And we've also seen an issue with transition from our Pre-K programs into our kindergarten programs. So those were the three areas that we were really focusing on with transition grades. And the data also supports that. We'll have our data will be looking pretty strong as we get the kids into fifth grade. And then we have a dip once they hit middle school and sixth grade. And then we kind of bring them back up again in seventh grade. So, and then, you know, to high school, it's harder to compare. But we definitely see when the kids get from eighth to ninth grade that we start to, you know, lose a few kids here and there, that that's a difficult transition time for them. So we're going to focus on those transition grades. We've done a lot of different things. You know that we do, we have the comprehensive orientation programs. You know that we, you know, so we do the freshman, Rising Freshmen Nights. And we also do, you know, for rising sixth graders, we bring those students in and we do a nice orientation for them to get them used to things. We have literacy coaches through the Striving Readers Grant. And the literacy coaches, although they're housed in the high schools, well, three of them are, they also, part of their function is to work with the middle schools specifically on transitioning kids from eighth grade to ninth grade. And then we have the literacy coaches that are housed here for elementary and for early childhood. And they as well are working on the transition pieces and universal screening elements and what we can do to support the transition grades. Ninth grade success. So that is quite, we, you know, as a former high school principal, you pay attention to what's happening in your ninth grade cohort with their data and who's earning enough credits to become a sophomore. And that is the hardest work, but that is definitely the work that pays off over four years. You rarely come across a student that earns enough credits to be a senior and then is going to drop out. And even 11th grade, they get to that point and they're not really, they're not going to drop out. It's ninth grade that you really need to catch them and make sure that they earn enough credits to become a sophomore. So that has been our focus. And we've put a lot of things in place this year. We're doing freshman seminar in all three high schools. So each one of the high schools has two sections of freshman seminar. And for this first year, you know, we brought it to you last year with the Program of Studies, adding it to the Program of Studies. And each one of the high schools is running those. And what we have is during A&amp;S is the principals get together and they're talking about, you know, what they're doing in each school so that we can spend this year, I don't, you know, we are piloting it, but we identified kids that we think would absolutely benefit from it so that we can develop some things that we're going to do as a system. And what kind of resources do we need to build into the budget to support our freshmen? And they're doing things in the class like a hack review on a regular basis. They're communicating with teachers. They're, you know, they're working with kids on study skills and what kinds of things. And if they have an upcoming test, working with the teachers that are giving the test so they can help support the students. And all of these things, then the principals get together in their monthly A&amp;S meetings during their leveled meeting times. And they talk about what's working so that we can develop some common thoughts about what the freshman seminar is going to look like. We also use, you know, you've heard us talk about ed annuity for recovery. So identifying kids, particularly our freshmen, who didn't pass that first quarter? And what kind of recovery options do we need to offer to them so that we can catch them before we get to the end of the year? Maybe they failed two quarters, or maybe they failed three quarters. We can get in there and start making sure that, you know, we focus on their learning and get them caught up as early as possible.
So this document, along with the school improvement plans, go hand in hand. They're not a one-shot deal. You don't write it and then put it on a shelf. But the work is monitored throughout the year, just as it is in schools. As a system, we do the same thing. And as I said, the school improvement plans were redesigned and explicitly designed to match the outcomes within ESSA and the same process that we use to identify specific focus areas. In the coming weeks, in the coming month, as the state releases its new data, all of that data will be posted to the school report card, the MDreportcard.org. And so as that goes live for school year 19 data, we encourage the public to look at that data as well. And then, of course, all of this work leads up to the pending recommendations that come from the Curbin Commission and how that will affect our work, as we've talked about before. So with that, we present our ESSA Consolidated Strategic Plan for you. And we welcome any questions you have.
No questions, thank you.
So I know in the past, the survey, that there was issues with the students having time or getting on the computer or it shutting down. Have you been able to work through all those kinks for the survey, for the students?
The state's, the state climate survey?
Yeah.
We actually, so the MDreportcard.org is probably going to go live next week?
I think after the state board meeting.
After the state board meeting. And it includes data from the surveys that were administered. We've never received any of the data locally.
Okay.
So it's built into a formula. And we've never, we've never seen any of the summary data out from the Maryland State Department of Education. So I think that once MDreportcard goes live, I think there's probably going to be quite a bit of questions because that represents 10, is it 10 points?
It's 10%.
Yes, 10%, of the overall. So, yeah, we welcome that data because we really want to make sure that we understand the data from last year so that we can prepare for and administer as thoroughly as possible the survey this year. We want to make sure we get input from everyone.
We do. But on our end, we are good with the technology and making things work. So everything we can do, we have, we have definitely worked on.
We think we've worked out all of the platform bugs, right?
So was it the state system was shutting down?
Yeah, it was crashing.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know if it was ours or for the service. They didn't anticipate, I guess, everybody getting on at once when they were having however many kids in the state of Maryland were getting on.
There are 900,000 children in public schools in Maryland.
Right, at a tight window, so, you know. It crashed.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I thank you for putting the entire report online so that we can read it. Thank you.
You know, I have to say, in the years of watching this and they've expected a mile wide and an inch deep of any of this, I think having the three focus areas and the ones that you've selected have really proven to be, over the years, just sort of bellwether predictors of how will our students do? And I know that this is not something you've suddenly attacked just for this year, that this has been an ongoing conversation. But I think the opportunity for each and every school to really take a very focused look at this and to determine what works, what makes sense for each particular school, I think is a real positive. So to the extent that this is a useful document over time, I think that really speaks volumes.
Thank you.
I'd just like to publicly thank Dr. Marr and Lisa Bachner.
Me as well, I would like to thank Dr. Bachner.
And Dr. Montgomery. And all of the content area supervisors and staff that come together to provide all of the answers, who oversee all of these grants, that turn around questions in 48 hours and provide all of this information to craft a plan in such a way. It used to be that within the St. Mary's County Public School System, there was a person
Janice Taylor.
Who, this was her job. This was pretty much her job.
And it was it was a weight.
Right. Larger systems had multi-volume sets of the annual update to the Master Plan. So lean and mean, I think that we definitely know are persistent areas of attention, our PAAs. And we have subsequently built a plan that really drives towards those particular things and unpacks what's working really well, because we are doing a great many things. And then how do we make that consistent from site to site and student to student? So it's all very good stuff. It's 6:55.
Does anyone have anything else?
No, thanks.
All right, we are adjourned. Next meeting is September 11.
Nice job, thank you.